After seven, so we'll get going. Welcome to this meeting of the Silverfall School Board. And please note attendance Denise. Please join me for the flag salute. Vice allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a couple of action items to take care of. Off the top tonight, it's the, it's our July meeting, beginning of the years in a way, and so we need to elect a chairman and vice chair. So is there nominations for chair, board chair?
I'll nominate Tim Roth as chair.
I second.
Further nominations? Okay, I've been nominated for, to continue on. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Nominations for vice chair? Anybody like to make a nomination for vice chair?
I nominate Wally Lehman for vice chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations for Wal, for vice chair? Okay, all in favor of Wally for vice chair?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, got that taken care of. Consent agenda, we have quite a few, just kind of house, yearly housekeeping items. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion for approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're good on that. Okay, I'd like to open it up for our first audience with visitors tonight. Would anyone like to address the board? We'll have a, another one later in the, later in the meeting also, but would anyone like to address the board tonight? Dean? Please sign in Dean, even though most of us know you.
They find you back there, does that count?
Uh-uh.
I figured then, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, there was a couple of things I wanted to talk with you about tonight, and obviously we all know what the bond results came in, and obviously the voters, you know, shot that down, but hopefully, and I think, I believe that this board in front of me is still steadfast in their highest priority of closing down Eugene Field School and moving those kids to a different environment. And I, and I also truly believe that the majority of the voters in Silverton, even if they voted against the bond, I believe the majority of those voters still want to see Eugene Field School closed, but they just weren't for the plan that was put in front of them, so, and I think you probably feel the same way about that. I know I saw on the agenda tonight that Andy's gonna be giving a, a report on some surplus property that this board may be considering, you know, selling at some point. I'd like to take that maybe a little bit further in regards to, I've had a conversation with Andy and I've had a conversation with Pete, Pete Paritas, and I think this, the board should consider not just necessarily bare land. There are other assets in this district, I believe, that could generate funds. When I was talking to Pete, you know, he mentioned in the old high school, there's like 500 desks and chairs in there that are just being stored and with, I believe, probably no intent of being used. And so I, I think this, you, you need to look at all your assets, not necessarily just land or maybe even buildings, but, you know, anything like that. Anything you can get coming into this district in the form of cash, I think is going to be important. And I think it sends, it sends a message to the taxpayers that you wanna be, you wanna get really lean with what you have. You're not holding things back or anything, excuse me, or anything else like that, if you need to go with a bond measure again for a lesser amount or in the future. You know, you can honestly show, to show the voters, hey, this, you know, this is what we have and this is why we're asking for it. So I think it's, I think it sends a good message to the taxpayers. And then the third thing I wanted to talk to you about tonight, and I think the most important thing is, is I would like to see the board form a committee, probably maximum, I would say, it wouldn't need to be more than seven people, to look at two options for Eugene Field School or relocating the students there, back to the Schleter Campus. And when I say back to the Schleter Campus, I am not talking about the old part of the school. I went on a tour with Pete Paritas last week and he took me through the rest of the school, that is not the old, the oldest part, the two-story part. And after looking at what's being used there now for charter, the charter routes and other areas of that school, the wing on, I guess it would be on the east side, a couple other possibilities where there are classrooms, I, I believe that Eugene Field School could be moved to Schleter Street totally, and I don't, there's a possibility, I think you would not have to even have a, well, not a modular, a modular unit on it. I think all those kids could be put into spaces. There's, there's some classrooms I even forgot about from going to school there, you know, back in the, in the seventies. So I, what I'd like to see is you guys form a committee as soon as possible and make the charge of that committee twofold. One, to come up with recommendations and cost estimates on moving Eugene Field students back there all by themselves, and then secondarily, also potentially leaving charter routes, the charter route school kids in there and still moving Eugene Field back. And I know that scenario would definitely involve some modulators, but I think you should, it would be worthwhile and wouldn't take much more effort on a committee's part to, to come back with two, two different ideas for you to look at and consider. And I honestly think that with the money that the school district has in its funds now, current income being coming in from monitor school, the sale of Robert Frost property, potentially the sale of assets that the school district has, if you decided to go move forward and sell any of those, that I, I really believe that I think you could be in a position to have all, move all those kids back, not have the, probably not have the charter school there, but to be able to transfer those 500 kids to Schleter and not ask for a nickel of taxpayer dollars. And I think that's a goal that you should try to aspire to, where you can be self-sufficient and getting those kids out of there, and if you can't get the taxpayers' support on doing that, you know you can still move forward and do it. So that's, that's my idea. So if you have any questions?
Any questions for Gene?
We've had several informal discussions about doing similar things, what you're talking about. One concern that we need, need to really look into is offsite improvements, because we had a, had a deal with the city that when, when the high school moved over to Pine Street, we didn't have, that offsite improvements weren't needed, but if anything changed on the Schleter Street campus, it would likely trigger some of the changes around the intersection stuff. I'm not sure much that's gonna cost, and that's something to be looking to.
No, that, that'd be, that'd be something, obviously, that's, obviously, if that's gonna be part of the process, it's gonna be part of the process, but, you know, still, I think, from an economic standpoint of being able to pull it off with, with either no more tax dollars or at least a very minimal amount, honestly, I think this is the best option, because Eugene Field would be able to have a, they'd be able to have a gym they can use, they have, you know, they have a cafeteria where the kids have to, where the kids could eat, they even have a kitchen, if, if that ever came into play for them, they've got green space. They're obviously not in a, a high-traffic area, so I don't, I, I don't see any downsides to at least giving that, giving this information, you know, and get it back to you.
Other questions for Gene?
What was your thinking, Dean, on moving Eugene Field kids there versus the Mark Twain kids? I mean, why, what was the thinking there?
Well, I think, number one, numbers. I mean, there's five, there's 500 kids at Eugene Field. Now, you could certainly move Mark Twain there and you, you know, but now you've got a two-grade, you've got a two-grade school, and you've, if you want, if you're truly wanting to get the Eugene Field kids out of there, which I, I do believe you do, you know, what do you do with four grades with a two-grade school without somehow spending probably some, some more money somewhere else? That, that's my thoughts there, is, is, you know, just the volume of kids that you're trying to relocate.
Other questions? Comments? Thank you, Gene. Those are some good comments. Dean, excuse me. You mixed up with your brother. Sorry, Dean. Okay. We'll keep it straight then. Sorry, Dean.
The school board has the authority to change names.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Just real quick, I'm Ron Beilenberg, Mayor of Scottsdale. I want to thank the board for their support with the all-day kindergarten out there. It was a lot of work. I think it took about six months to get it. I appreciate you setting a fair goal for us to meet, and I think we've met it. And I'm very optimistic that siblings from the kinder program will also continue on at Scottsdale. So I just wanted to give a little bit of thanks to you.
Thanks. Thank you, Ron.
Thanks very much.
Hope it's successful.
Me too.
Okay, would anyone else like to address the board tonight? Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. The first one is our annual, annual evaluation of the superintendent, I'm Andy Blando. At our work session in June, we did the, in the executive session, we did our evaluation, then I kind of summarized some things that were said and some scores, and so I'm just gonna go ahead and read this, read this tonight for the public's information. Attached is a summary of the superintendent evaluation forms, which were individually completed by a majority of board members. As agreed, we have evaluated you on standards one, two, three, four, and six. The board collectively gave you very favorable marks on each of these standards. This was in many ways a somewhat difficult year with some surprises along the way. The decision to seek approval of a construction bond, the development of achievement compacts, and the continued budgetary issues and uncertainties all contributed to this. You demonstrated very effective leadership through all of this and kept the vision for this district at the forefront. We appreciate your efforts to engage and inform the community and staff as much as possible and get relevant information to them on issues affecting the district. Conflicts that arose were handled with care and appropriateness. Your diligence in keeping up with budget-related issues is very much appreciated by the board. There were very few surprises along the way, and you kept district and instructional priorities as a main topic of discussion throughout. Your efforts to engage staff and other administrators in these discussions were very important and well-received as well. We appreciate your visibility and accessibility in our community and each of our schools. Even with difficult issues to deal with, the district continues to move forward and strive for continued student academic success. The board also appreciates your ongoing communication with us and keeping us up to date with as much information as possible to make good decisions on these district matters. The following is a summary of the comments made during our evaluation review with you on June 24th, the Silverfall School Board. Number one, a major focus of this past year was the implementation of the long-range facilities plan and seeking voter approval of the capital construction bond. This was a major undertaking which you handled very well. You did a good job throughout the whole bond process. All the public and staff meetings you held to educate the public were well-done and kept people informed. You did a good job keeping the board up to date on all aspects of the process, which is much appreciated. Number two, the work and effort put into the district achievement compacts is to be commended. This was largely unchartered territory with very few parameters to go by. These were well-done and completed in a timely manner. The whole district focus on student achievement and the push to improve instruction to all children is a positive and necessary thing, and your leadership in these areas is to be commended. Number three, in another difficult budget year, your leadership in this area has been very good. Your efforts to engage staff and principals in establishing priorities were well-received. You kept everyone up to date and there were no surprises on budget matters. Being able to have a full calendar school year next year, meaning no furlough days, give staff an increase in compensation and start adding some dollars back into reserves are all very positive things and have given a boost in morale to staff and community members alike. Thank you for the good leadership you used to accomplish this. You are an excellent role model of respect and understanding, and you are one who values children and education. You do not shy away from difficult situations. You have demonstrated humility, good communication skills, and have provided effective leadership for our school district. And some recommendations. As the district continues to form facility plans, find even more ways to engage, educate, and inform the public. Continue to work to find new ways to find out what the public will support related to facilities. Continue to work with reputable consultants and contractors who can help the district through these processes. Number two, keep the board even more informed on issues in our schools surrounding safety, specifically as it relates, when appropriate, student discipline issues centered around safety for our kids. Number three, continue to work to make this a more unified district. This is a large task, given our many buildings and communities, the one we should always be striving for. Number four, we encourage you to continue to anticipate issues that may have an impact on the school district. Continue to work to understand the culture and issues in our district schools. Continue to make decisions that champion academic success and improvements for our students. The board thanks you for your dedication and hard work in making our district one of the best in the state of Oregon, and for your commitment to our community, students, and staff. We appreciate your approachability, your willingness to listen, and your leadership in providing our students with the best possible education. Your work in our district is truly recognized and appreciated. Thank you for always striving to do what's best for kids. Good job, Andy. So, the evaluation, oh, excuse me. The scoring is on the back sheet, the scoring of each of the individual standards, and I won't go through those, because it's just kind of numbers, but if you, if anybody wants to see a copy of those, the eval, there's some copies of the evaluation forms. So, thank you, Andy. Okay, any other discussion on this? Okay, moving on. Our November 11th board meeting is, is scheduled for Veterans Day, and so we typically, when that happens, we typically either move it to the Tuesday of that same week, or possibly the next Monday. So, any thoughts on that?
My only thought, do we know when the OSBA conferences? It's usually just right around that time as well.
It usually is.
Tuesday's probably okay, but...
It usually is. I would guess it's that weekend before Veterans Day. Do you know, David?
Don't look at me.
Yes, it is 15th and 16th, that weekend, 14th, it's a fall weekend, okay.
We have a fall, okay.
Oh, okay. So Tuesdays, is Tuesday okay with everybody?
Works for me. It's fine.
Okay. Okay, I think Denise has already reserved this building for that, so, thanks Denise. The next discussion item, our July 22nd board work session. I know we talked at our last meeting about people's availability. Sometimes people are out of town and things a little hard to get together, but we did also talk about that we probably have plenty to discuss if we have a quorum and enough people, so, thoughts on that? You'll be here?
I'm here.
Pardon, Julie?
I'm here.
Okay. Anybody else? Shall we, shall we keep it scheduled for the 22nd?
So far.
We'll, we'll keep that on the calendar then Denise. Proposed revisions to policies. I'll go through these one at a time. For any comments, concerns? Policy DH, bonded employees and officers. Anything on this one?
Let me decipher my note here a second. Oh, we added, says to protect district loss against an amount determined by the board, so on and so forth. When, when and how will that be set, this, this amount? Should we have a dollar figure in there, or leave it?
In, in, the, the dollar figure is a designation annually, while you just designated $50,000 tonight.
Okay.
And, and you do that on an annual basis based upon advice from our internal agent of record.
Okay.
Any, any other thoughts on this one? Okay, policy EGACH, cell phones.
Yeah, on this one, we have a sentence that says, "Employees shall not use cell phones, whether district-owned or personally-owned, for non-district-related business while attending to or performing their job responsibilities." That seems pretty, pretty restrictive to me, especially for extracurricular activities.
That's true. I hadn't thought of that, but that is very true.
Yeah, it's probably not even realistic.
We can make adjustment as you, as you feel appropriate. I, this is, this is not a, this is not a required policy change, but came as a result of one or more cases that OSBA has dealt with, with a few school districts in the, in the state, specific to district-owned cell phones. So it's my understanding that that statement, Wally, was a result of, of, you know, sort of the end of the, of the breadth, however tight you would like to have it. So we can surely eliminate that or modify it so it's a little softer.
I, I was guessing it was probably aimed at, you don't want teachers using their cell phones for personal calls during the school day. Well, you also do have employees that probably do need to use their cell phones during the day they aren't in the classroom, and then there's after-school activities that they do use cell phones, and they probably will continue to.
Would wording it more as, excuse me, as instructional, instructional time be a more appropriate way to word it? Just so that, you know, when it's time for teacher-student relationship, that's not an issue, but at the same time, in between classes, if there's a need or...
After school.
After school, or, you know, coaching or something.
Or an employee that's not even teaching.
Yeah.
You could put during instructional time in, right after the non-district-related business, during instructional time, or something like that.
And it would still have that point, but at the same time soften it.
Yeah, it needs to be softened. It seems appropriate, so.
Yeah, I agree with that. It's tough to have some personal time during the workday.
I will, actually, we have some language specific to use of, of school-owned phones, the landlines, that I will review and see if we can substitute some of that language for this, because really, they're two very similar items, but yeah, I'll come up with some language for that.
How many district-owned cell phones do we have? I was just kind of curious.
Most of them are in the custodial maintenance department.
Okay.
Must be a half dozen or so anyway, and Pete, Helen, that's about the extent of it. We don't have many.
Okay, wait a, okay. Anything else on this one? Okay, GCA license requirements. Nothing? IK, academic achievement. I had a question on this one. Let's see. Okay, yeah, I had a question on the, "Parents will be informed at least annually of their student's progress to meet or exceed grade level academic content standards, including but not limited to." Is annually enough? I was wondering if we should, I mean, I, I think it's done even more than that realistically.
I had the same comment. I think it's, I wrote it down here and I started, kept reading. I think it refers to everything on here, but I think that may be adjusted as well.
This is, this is language directly from House Bill 2220, referring to student grading and reporting to parents, and so, you know, you have language in this, it's four times a year. That's based upon the old quarter grading system, which our elementary schools don't even use anymore.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to put it a minimum twice a year or three times a year, I can't imagine a time that we would ever...
Aren't they currently done every time the grades come out?
It's done every, the progress reports are every even six weeks now, so.
I don't know what it is in the younger levels, but...
The difference might be here in item C, where it talks about student scores in all state and local assessments, including the requirements. That may be where they, they talk about annually, but I think in general, we do want lots of communication with parents on how their children are doing in school.
And that was, that was part of my concern too, is with state testing and, I know Oaks is going away, but using Oaks as, as an example, if a kid gets up into, you know, 11th grade and hasn't passed their, say their math Oaks, parents really need to know that, and I would...
It's kind of a big deal.
I would think, I don't know, Mark, can I ask you how, if parents are informed on the status of their kids within a situation like that, or how often that occurs?
Well, we have, they're obviously informed at conference time, every time that there's a grade report, but I think what, what that particular thing is referring to is reporting the standard, isn't it, Andy?
It is, yeah. Reporting to the standards, correct.
Reporting to the standards is a pretty lengthy process, and we're, at, at the high school, we're actually working on that over the summer, what that looks like, and we'll have to do it. If we do it annually, it will have to include the first, the semester courses in first semester. We've talked about doing it twice a year, where the semester courses, they're finished at the end of first semester, and then the semester course is finished at the end of second semester. But reporting to the standard is literally letting parents know on each standard, each class, how their, how their student's doing. So it's a fairly large process, and we're trying to pare it down to power standards, so it's not every standard, because if you look at each course that we teach, there's a multitude of standards to report.
Yeah, okay.
So I think that's what HB 2220, that particular piece is, is referring.
If you would like to include something about multiple reporting opportunities to parents generally about academic performance, we can truly craft a statement placing in here, but, but Mark is correct, that the entire number one really does pertain to reporting to, to standards.
Okay, and I think we do that really well already, as far as keeping parents up to date through the progress reports, and I think, I think we do a really good job of that already.
I'd like to see that added, because I think that's what we do in practice. You read this policy, I see what Mark's saying in here, but you take a personal glance at it, that's, that's not what appears, that's what it's talking about.
Right. Okay. The policy should match, the policy shouldn't match the practice.
Yeah.
So kind of throw something in there about what we're already doing with the progress reports.
Outside the, these...
Outside the standards, okay. Which wouldn't add anything to anybody's play, it's just make a policy. Okay, that makes, that's good sense. Anything else on this one? Okay. IKAB, grading system. Anything on this one? Okay. IKAB, student progress reports to parents. Okay. JECA.
Go back again. It talks about annually again here as well, in IKAB. So we may have, need a super statement.
Yeah, this one specifically goes to content standards right away, so. Could put something in, you know, in addition to what we're already doing, or whatever. JECA, admission of resident students. Anything on here? JEF, releasing students from school. Nothing? Okay.
Give credit to Denise who caught this one. You can't take the credit for that one? Oh, Amy Chisman.
Oh, the Schleter part?
Schleter.
Okay. JHCCA, students. HIV, HPV, and AIDS. Nothing on that one? Okay, that takes care of those. Proposed new policy, CCJ, licensed evaluation. This is just in response to the new evaluation process that teachers are gonna be going through, extend-ons to administrators, and we've heard a presentation from Marie Traeger and Marilyn Ann in a couple months. Traeger and Marilyn Annin a couple months ago about this, so. Any comments on this one? Questions?
Not this year.
Yeah, wait a year.
Wait a year, and then I'll see how it works.
Yeah, okay. Discussion item F, proposed policy deletion, JHCCB students HIV/AIDS. And I think this is just an older one that is, can be deleted since we, if we adopt the new one. Is that correct, Andy?
With the revisions to JECA, if you have replicated language with these policies.
Yes, okay.
Correct.
Anything on this one? Great. Budget committee vacancy. Well, we, tonight appointed Betty Jo Steele to another term on the budget committee. Uh, we still have one vacancy, and I, Andy, has anybody shown interest?
No, no one has approached me or made contact with the district office, and I'm aware of it.
And be thinking of this, we prob, when did, when did we, I don't, can't remember when we needed to appoint somebody, by September?
Uh, in, in the fall.
Okay.
By October, by your regular session in October is, would be a good time to make this decision, no later than.
Okay. So if you have anybody in mind, kind of keep it in-
Who's vacancy replacing?
Uh, Kashan and Noel.
Okay.
Out in the Scots Mills area, so, you know, somebody even from out, out in that area would be a good fit for that.
Perfect.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Try to keep it spread out a little bit. Okay, Victor Point School, additional halftime, .5 FTE middle school teaching position. We talked about this at our work session a little bit. Sixth grade, big sixth grade class up there. Any other discussion on this tonight? We had kind of given, given verbal approval at the work session that it was probably a good idea to, to do this. Did you have any comments on this, Andy?
Nothing has changed since two weeks ago with enrollment numbers. Again, it's, it's July, but we don't anticipate any changes.
Yeah, okay. Victor Point had enough money, just for the public, Victor Point had enough money in their budget to fund a halftime, but they have a very big sixth, sixth grade class, which in the, the rest of the day, when that first halftime teacher isn't there, the numbers would be thirty-nine.
I just think when you look at our formula, maybe this summer, when our, it's not a ritual, what are we calling our big meeting?
Extended work session.
A retreat?
Retreat.
Because, uh, we had a situation at Central Hall last year, and now Victor Point this coming year, um, with, with, the formula is really looking at declining enrollment. We've had a couple instances of, uh, increasing enrollment. We need to figure out how to-
Make allowances.
Better handle that.
Make allowances when things like that occur. Okay. Review, review results of postponed election survey. Andy, do you want to kind of, I know we have a summary that was given to us tonight. There was some stuff online, and honestly, I didn't have much time to, to look at it. So do you want to kind of take, start us off on this one, and then we can?
Yes, and, and I'm, I'm pleased that you're, you know, you have a quorum to meet during your work session this month, because I, I'm going to suggest that this be one of the primary topics that you use at the work session, that you drill down into the results, and, and to take a little bit more time and provide you the course of the next couple of weeks to, to read through them. Uh, for, for your information, each of you tonight has a copy of the summary, excuse me, summary document, and attached to that, the last five pages, four pages, uh, I believe, are, uh, are individual summaries, or, excuse me, are summaries of the, of the questions that were asked of the public, uh, in a prioritized fashion. So the last four pages give you the, sort of the global, the thirty thousand foot elevation view of what the priorities are, as determined anyway by the hundred and eighty-four participants in this, in this thought stream survey. And then the, the larger document, uh, is more detailed, specific to what, what those folks have provided. Now, uh, before I go any further, let me just share with you, and I think this is really a reminder more than anything, is that this, this survey, it's really more of an engagement process, is, is two-phase. The first phase was literally seeking input from the community, specific to their thoughts, of what, what were the reasons that they can provide in their own words, that addressed each of the questions that were asked. What were the, what were the challenges of the bond election? What were the strengths of the bond election? What other, uh, elements do you see specific to the school district that we can improve? What are the strengths of the school district? I mean, those were the four, and then, and then general input was the fifth question. The second phase to this process was asking anybody, not just those that participated in the first phase, but anybody to take a look at the thoughts that were submitted, and to prioritize them. Uh, and, and, you know, this is, this is a new approach. It's somewhat unconventional, but based upon information I've received from some other school districts that use this, what they've found is that this, this interactive engagement process is much more than a quantifiable data that you would get on a, an analytical survey. If we were to ask a question and give you five or six responses, we're essentially providing the responses for the public to respond to us with. This, rather, puts the, the onus on the public to say, what were the reasons, and then for the public themselves to see what were the submissions by all of those others participating in this engagement process. So, in my mind, and what I heard from other districts, is part of the beauty of this process, is it allows people to see through this interactive method, what some of the other information was being submitted, and for them to be able to comment and literally prioritize those as well. So, if, if I could refer you to the back few pages, you'll see, uh, the one at the top, it says, it says parent voice, it really should say community voice, but community voice, key challenges at Silver Falls. Uh, and there are four boxes, four different colors on that page. And if you go to the top, using nothing more than kind of an analytical response, uh, the, the top, which would assume to be the larger priorities of the, of those participating, would be a high number of participants, and it says high total stars. So each of the stars there indicated the largest number of responses by the public, and the largest, in the phase one, and then the largest number of stars given in the prioritization process in phase two. So using this source of information alone, the key challenges for these people with the bond were communication and trust, lack of details, uh, stated history with the old high school, and that's actually only a partial statement. It should say with the old high school replacement, uh, lack of community input, the high cost, and then, uh, concerns for the, the needed outlying schools. Now, you can take each one of those, and I'm going to have this document prepared for you, it's taking a little bit more effort, but you can take each of those, and under communication and trust, you will see each of the, the individual comments that were grouped into communication and trust. So you'll be able to see what person A, B, C, D, E, however many people submitted their comments to that, will, will say were the, were the main issues related to that topic and that category. Conversely, if you were to look clear at the bottom, low number of participants and low to average total stars. So those at the bottom, you would, again, from an analytical standpoint, can reasonably assume were the, uh, probably the smallest number of reasons that people consider to be challenges in Silver Falls related to the bond. So those included doing too much, reasons for the new schools versus repairing, responsibilities of the district, lack of awareness, underestimated pushback, too long to pay taxes, lack vision for the future, Eugene Field, no provisions made for charter schools, and false information. And then there were comments specific to each of those generalizations, mainly. Now I want to draw your attention to the second page, because again, as you look through this, I think it's important to identify these as well, is that there are, in a similar fashion, key strengths at Silver Falls related to the bond, and those at the top were considered to be the, again, high number of participants, with, with the largest number of stars, and at the bottom, lowest number of participants, low to average stars.
Andy?
Actually, Julie, go ahead.
With the community roots school, were that, was the primary concern more about finding a new location for them, or were they looking for something more than that?
Uh, the, uh, before answering that question, or in answering that question, Julie, take a look at page two of the question, literally the second page in the document you have. And if you take a look, look there, the, the community roots school was not included in the bond plan, which is an accurate statement. Uh, it says participant count twenty-nine. There were twenty-nine people submitted that as a concern for the bond. And, and of those, the, the largest reason was that, you know, it wasn't included in some capacity in the plan, whether it was another home for them, or whether there are at least plans made for their participation, you know, either in the bond, or opportunity to piggyback with the district to be on a site somewhere in the district for their continuation. And again, you'll see those specific comments when you see the individual summaries. But the point, the point that I'm making there, Julie, is that, is that I think it's, it's a good example for, for awareness by you as board members to take a look at the participant count. While that received a very high rating, there were twenty-nine people that submitted that as a concern. Uh, and again, take a look at the others, communication with the community and trust, there were sixty-five people that communicated that as a concern. Fifty-three, you know, for the district to not provide enough detailed plans for the money, et cetera, you can go down the list. So it's important that not only do you take a look at what that concern is, what the rating is, but how many people participated and considered that to be a concern. Not that it's any less valid, uh, but I think it gives you a reference for where that should be included in part of your conversation as you move ahead.
I think we also need to recognize this wasn't, shouldn't be considered a scientific survey, either. It's whoever decide to log in and take the survey.
So, as, you know, we all know, you can take a look at data all day and all night, for hours and hours and hours. So I would suggest that each of you take a look at this document, over the course of the next couple of weeks, and we use this as the primary talking point, and come up with some very specific, I think, agreeable items that, that you would like me to move forward with. And I, and I think there are a couple of questions that I would suggest that you also take a look at. First of all, were, are there any surprises from this data? Were there any comments that you saw that you go, wow, I didn't even think about that? And admittedly, Julie, community roots is one of them. The fact that community roots concern was so prevalent in here surprised me. I didn't realize that, and that was very helpful for me to see.
What about, what about Bethany, the other charter school? Because, because I, I wasn't surprised, I mean, I kind of, I wasn't that surprised, and maybe I misunderstand how charter schools are working, they're funded, but they, they get their share of the state funding to fund their school, which includes the staff and their building, right? So, they're not getting any of this bonded money.
Correct.
Is that what we're seeing here? So they're saying, great, you're going to tax me to build schools, but I don't get any share of that. Is this a reflection that they're aware of that? And they're saying, if I can run my school this way, why can't you? That's, that's, I mean, I think, I, I heard that from some, from some people I know that are connected out, out there at Bethany, who have connections out there, and I just, they were, they were aware of that. And I just think that maybe they need to be included in that, you know? They're paying taxes, they probably need some of the money. I think it's fair to, to keep that in mind.
Sure.
You know, or, or, or to, to flush that out versus, because they do have, they can operate their schools in different ways, but, but those, those needs need to be made aware of, I think.
We did have a conver, Andy and I had a conversation with, um, the principal out of Bethany and a couple board members, and they were, and that, it doesn't mean that the general public was, was aware, but they were very aware that because they're a charter school, they wouldn't be included in the bond, but they would have the opportunity to piggyback onto some of this, like the, the technology piece.
Yes.
And the safety and security piece. They would have the opportunity to piggyback on that if they chose to.
Okay.
And, um, but they were, they were aware that because they're a charter school, they wouldn't automatically be included in the, in the bond dollars the same way the other outlined schools are.
Right.
But that doesn't necessarily mean it's a-
See, it's still a perception.
It's a, yeah.
Right.
It's still a perception from the public. And, and the community roots thing may have been, you know, really related, or, you know-
A little bit of that.
A lot related to that, and that, that they wouldn't have a home.
Right, we got to move again.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think that was, maybe, if there's any difference between the two, Tom, is that, is that between Bethany Charter and Community Roots, is that Community Roots has had to move, what, three times now?
Yes.
And, and has one more, more year on their lease for use of the Slater Building, which is still an uncertainty, you know, a year from now, essentially. Hopefully, we can help sort that out about what that looks like, but I think it's, all bets are off still a year from now, even, about what that could look like, but their lease is up one year from now.
Yeah. What I, what I read into that is, is that they could see where they fit into this, into this vision of this bond. So they're, you know, so it looks like they're pretty upset about it.
But I see what you're saying, too, Tom. That could be, for both Bethany and Community Roots, that could be a reason that somebody would know as well. My school isn't getting anything out of this, so.
Yeah.
You know, so I understand that part, too. Did you have any other comments on this, Andy? That was, that was really good information, because I was having, when I looked at this online, I was having a little trouble understanding how it all fit together, so.
The, I'd like to add, uh, just some of the comments I had talking around to people. One of the things that I really heard a lot about was they were upset at deferred maintenance. That, that that basically says, we knew, you know, it gives the impression that we could have spent a thousand dollars to fix a problem, and we're going to let it go to a fifty thousand dollar problem, or something like that, and just fix it with bonded money. You know, that, that is something that we should have been able to handle with the day-to-day funds. And, you know, and it's deferred maintenance, meaning we deferred it, we knew it should have been done, and, you know, and that kind of can, that sword can cut both ways, because if you do it, and then you replace the building, people will say, well, why you spend all that money on a building to put a roof on it, when you're going to tear the building down in a couple of years. But, but that, that was a common thing. It, it, it kind of signaled, people, people interpreted that as the money is not managed right. That's just something I heard. That was a pretty common thing.
Heard that as well.
Yeah. And just that signal.
We need to figure out how to, how to communicate better around that.
Well, I mean, I think it's just, honestly, I mean, it's, we did it. I mean, I personally thought it was, these are things we should do. We should try to keep as many teachers in the buildings. I mean, we did it, that's what we chose to do, and just own up to it.
Well, and we, we did communicate that. Maybe one, maybe moving forward, one, one idea also would be to, to show how the maintenance budget has decreased because of the choice we've made to keep teachers at the classroom.
And we chose to do that. You know, own, own up to it. I mean, it's, it's, it's a fair criticism.
There was a perception out there, though, that we were recollecting the buildings.
Yes.
And that's, that's not really true. We were deferring some maintenance that we would have liked to have done, but-
Right.
But the buildings aren't falling down, and aren't safe.
Right, exactly, exactly. But that's just, that's just the feedback I heard.
Other comments on this?
I do have one more comment, Tim, and that is that, that your, your conversations with community members, I think, are as, as, um, as, I think, significant as this kind of engagement process. So what you hear from others, notes that you may have received, emails that you may have received, comments that you hear, just conversations in the community, even those that you're seeking out, I think are, are pretty important for you to have, because that's where the true, in my mind testament of people come. They're not necessarily coming here and speaking to you as a group of seven, but there is comfort in them speaking with you by telephone or in person. And so those are extremely valuable comments.
Yeah.
And I think it's something that we need to share with, with each other. I've received a few as well.
Yeah, they really are. Okay. Okay, this is good information. Let's, I'd encourage everybody to look at it over the next couple of weeks, and spend a little time with it, and then we can have it as an agenda item in our work session. And also comments like Tom talked about here, too, because if you hear from one person, that probably means there's another ten out there talking about the same thing, so. Okay, moving along, administrative staff reports. Andy, district real estate property inventory appraisal of Steel Hammer.
Yeah, I think over, over a period of time, you, you have been very curious, as have I, actually, about where, where you're going to go with your, your inventory of property that you have in the school district. So I put together a, a single-page document that indicates the total acreage placed enrollment last spring there as well, but total acreage, uh, for each site within the school district, every school. Uh, you know, it's pretty clear information. The only oddity is that at the creek, where you have seven acres, and there is a three-acre easement that's across the highway that we use for subject drainage field. Otherwise, every other piece of property in the district is self-contained, uh, and with building and so forth. You, you also asked that, in order for you to consider the potential sale or liquidation of one or more pieces of your property, and keeping in line with one of the recommendations that you received from the Longreach Facility Planning Committee, was to give consideration to selling some property, I provided to you the three pieces of property you have that are, are larger, in many cases significantly larger than, than the school that they house. Uh, and so, actually, for the sake of the public, I did put through the slides, you know, the overhead, otherwise it's just plain- overhead, otherwise it's just plain, I'll just bring this for you, and then ask for your conversation. Turn the lights off for a minute. First, this is Steel Hammer property. This is nine and a half acres, and you've spoken about this property in the past. And this, this is Steel Hammer Road. Down here is Highway, it's actually here, Highway 213. This is a silver townhouse over here. And you access this property from 213 onto Steel Hammer Road, and then there's a small, this is maybe 75 yards or so, a small access area to a much larger piece of property in the back. It's surrounded largely by houses or small properties. This is also quite a sloping property. I don't know what it is, it's 4%, maybe even a steeper slope than that. But over the course of time, you have spoken about what to do with this property. In fact, you had it appraised last time in the year 2000. There was some interest in 2000, which must be 2007 or 2008, in trading this property for a larger piece of property, actually further east. And there was some consideration to doing that. We actually did some investigation into that. And I believe it pretty much halted when, at the time, Greg Rossler found out that a portion of the deed for this property requires that when you sell it, I believe it's 20% portion of that revenue generated from that property needs to be placed in a trust, and then the interest from that trust is to be dedicated solely to the special education department of the district.
Let's sell it.
About 80% of the revenue of this property would still be a significant chunk of change. And we have had it appraised. I was on the phone with capital valuation today, and she assured me that I'd have it by the end of the workday tomorrow. So I'm sorry that you don't have that here this evening, but you'll have it shortly after our meeting, take a look at it. The market is fairly saturated, is what I understand right now. We have a couple of real estate agents in the room, maybe they can shine a little bit more. But the fact is, in my mind, when we think about your available properties that are not necessarily going to be used any time, not just in the near future, but any time for school property, in my mind, this is one. Or as a school building, I should say. Secondly, this is Robert Frost property. You can see the black outline, you can want to be a part copy. Here's Westfield Street, Highway 213, or, excuse me, Highway 213, so. This is about, what's it say, 29 acres? I think that's what it says.
Yeah, yeah, on the whole.
Board is a Baptist church here, a senior center here. And Robert Frost itself takes up about 50%, maybe 55% of the entire property. The back portion of the property also slopes quite a bit, but there has been consideration in the past with this piece of property to actually have a second school. In fact, the former elementary district, the 4C, proposed in 1984, I believe, that Eugene Field be replaced and the second elementary school be constructed at the lower portion of this property. It failed, but that was the first attempt at trying to replace Eugene Field School. This property is limited in one very significant way, and that's access. There's no access from the back currently. It's EFE land, I believe, on the lower part here and this side. It's commercial. The storage area here is here, the fire department is over here, the cemetery, Safeway is right here, so you can kind of get the general sense of where we are. However, there's an additional 12, 13 acres currently that's filled with Scott's Room and Blackberry. There's a little dog walker trail back there that's, I shouldn't say that uply, but that's what people use it for.
With, Andy, with, I don't know city rules and stuff, I'm more used to EFE stuff, but can you, could you lop off that bottom portion and sell it?
It's my understanding that you could petition to have that occur, and that you would have some success with that.
We've already locked up other pieces of it.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah.
That's a good point, Wally. All of this property here was school district property up until about six or seven years ago, eight years ago, but Senior Center is now. And then the last piece, which is a little grainy here, sorry about that, but this is the Mark Twain property. Here's Mark Twain Middle School, Robinson Street, Mill Street. This is the old Champion Home site down there. And about 15 acres at Mark Twain. Here's one soccer field, this is the second soccer field, it was added around 2000, 2001. And so, you know, the site itself, the school itself, even counting two playing fields, which are about two and a half acres total, you still have some property available there. It's fairly limited and it's somewhat isolated. I suppose a person could do something in this area. A person could consider acquiring this triangular piece of land, which supposedly they've been on the board, you know, they've been considering it, has, or at least been proposed in the past, but has never transpired. And, but that, you know, a person could square that off, is my understanding, and you could do something with that. But again, I share those three pieces of property with you simply because they're the properties that have the most available land available for other purposes if you were to do, choose to do something someday. My suggestion is, if you were to give any consideration to do anything with any of the properties that are between Steel Hammer property in some sort, that's all right. Anyway, that's just a quick summary of what you have in front.
Okay, discussion on this. Thank you, Andy. It's good information. I think this is something we still, we need to keep looking at and see if there's anything we can do with this surplus property to generate some funds, to do something with facilities, so.
As a matter of process, if you were to come to a point where you were to say you would like to put the Steel Hammer property on the market, you would have to designate it as a piece of property that's not needed for school purposes. Make that designation formally, you take action as a board, and from that point, we move ahead with advertising it and making sense.
Okay.
So did we actually put the property on the market in the past, or did we just discuss that possibility?
I found no record.
Okay.
I don't think we ever did.
Unless some of you can recall it, otherwise, but I found no record.
There was talk of a trade, but that didn't go anywhere. We never did.
I think the triangle piece of Mark Twain we did, and not the Steel Hammer.
Oh, to sell?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That was interesting.
Anything else?
Well, I think, I mean, as long as I've been on this board, this has been an ongoing sort of back burner conversation and possibility, and I think we need to keep going with it.
Yeah, I think it's time to get more serious about it.
Move it to the front burner and see if we can heat it up.
Yeah, I would agree, David.
See if we can do something with it. It's certainly a valuable asset, and it's one that we've, or some of it at least, we probably won't have any use for.
Yeah, I would agree. Okay, anything else? Okay, Scott Pilar, welcome. Your first board meeting.
Thank you very much.
Business manager. Financial report.
Yes. Well, I've been on the job, this was my fourth day today, so I, yeah, it's been a little bit of a whirlwind, but I...
Did Jan give you her normal report?
She did, yes. She created that and put it...
No, I mean, what her norm, what she normally says.
Yeah, she told me what to say, and if you have any questions, I'm done. No, it's been, it's been a lot of, it's been a lot of fun. Jan's been very supportive. We worked closely together for at least a couple of those days, and I'll spend most of the day again tomorrow, working with her, getting up to speed. Recently, in the last few days, what I wanted to do is kind of get an idea of how you as a district was going to, we were going to finish out the year, and I'm happy to say that we're finishing out the year better, in better shape this year than we finished out the year last year. We started with the 11 and 12 audit and used that as a base year. We looked at the revenue and expenditure picture for the year, and while we still have some struggles, or straggling things coming in, and we still have struggles from a school funding standpoint, I think that we've got a really good solid start for the year, so I'm pleased to report that. Our revenue picture is looking better than, we have a bit more revenue coming in than we had budgeted for, and our expenditure picture is a bit less. We've expended or will expend less than we had budgeted for, so both of those together help a lot in our financial picture. The big thing that we want to look at is really determining what that ending fund balance is. What, how much money actually do we have left over at the end of June 30? And I won't be able to give you real solid numbers until your next board meeting or perhaps your workshop, but right now, everything that I'm seeing so far has been pointing to no big major surprises, so.
Good.
If that helps. You have in front of you the traditional sheet. I've been going through, kind of looking at how this is built, and if you have any, you know, questions or comments about what you'd like to see, please let me know. I have some thoughts in terms of some additional things that I might start putting on the back of this. Again, that probably won't happen until next month, but if you have any questions or comments on what you'd like to see, or some things that you'd like me to highlight, I'd be certainly very open to hearing that and trying to provide that kind of explanation to you as best as I can. Your balance sheet, you have an abridged balance sheet, that's your first section there. That shows essentially what your cash position is. So if you look down at the bottom, you have $5.3 million more in revenue, less your obligations to date. So that's a, that's, you know, you always want that number to be high and positive. And then your summary by fund, essentially those are all of your funds that you have, and that measures your year-to-date revenues, how much money you have coming in each, in each fund, less all your expenses. So that number, that balance, all of that ties into the balance sheet number, so that's how those two connect. And then it drills down even more by fund on your budget remaining. And remember, at the beginning of the year, your budget is just an educated guess, so it's not uncommon to be off a bit from your budget, both on your revenue side and on your expenditure side. You just want to keep an eye on that. That's what you really want to monitor on a regular basis. And this shows essentially where the breakout is. Again, you had $576,000 more in budgeted revenue than you had budgeted for, and then $4.8 million less in total expenditures. Now, when you want to drill down in each one of those funds, we can do that kind of individually or more a little later. I don't, I'm not prepared with that kind of information at this meeting, but just to let you know that the stuff that we've seen hasn't been very surprising so far. And then finally, your, I guess if we went to through, third page, is essentially a breakout of your general fund, which is your largest fund, that's where you do most of your operations from. That's the one that a lot of folks like to keep a real close eye on, because there's a tremendous number of inflows and outflows in that particular fund. And it shows you there where you are based on budget. And again, your budget is an educated guess, is your guiding principle document. So like on the front part where you see the budgeted amounts not subject to carryover retention, you'll see some different schools have gone over their budgeted allotment. Most of that has to do, at least from my initial assessment, is in how we budget. We have to budget on an average salary basis, so any of those schools that have a more tenured staff, we're going to have staff members that are getting paid a little bit more by virtue of that. Because of budgeted, the budgeted figure is going to be essentially a little bit lower, their actual cost is going to be a little higher. I don't think it is. And then finally, the back sheet is your, is what's commonly called a cash flow statement, kind of an eye test, an eye test for me as well. So we can talk a little bit about this particular form, but essentially, this shows your revenue and expenditures by month. So you, as a board, you obviously want to make sure that we're staying on positive cash flow, and positive cash flow essentially means more money coming in than going out in any given month. So that's what you have so far in terms of your financial report. And again, we'll be looking at kind of tightening that up and maybe doing some more explaining of some of the components of what you should be looking for as board members moving forward. But if you have any thoughts or any kind of suggestions, or, you know, why do we always look at this, and why is this important, please feel free to give me a call. I'm happy to answer that in any way I can.
Great. Excuse me, questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott. That was good review of some of that stuff. Okay, any board reports tonight? Nobody correspondents? There was an emailed letter that came out today. Maybe we can take a look at that. Okay, I'd like to open it up for a second audience with visitors. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board tonight?
Again, laundry lover, City of Scott Mills. Just a quick question, and I'm not sure why Victor Point, you didn't ask for a motion, it was just kind of a consensus, and maybe I missed the point. You basically spent $40,000 to Victor Point for a halftime teacher, and no hoops or no motion, no vote, nothing, and Scott Mills had to jump through the hoops. Essentially the same thing. I'm just curious if you can explain that.
I, though, the only thing I would say to that is, the Victor Point situation here is the same thing that happened with Scotts Mills a few years ago, when, when the, a lot of the moderate kids moved over, and you guys had bigger class sizes out there, and a halftime teacher became necessary out there, and so the district funded a halftime teacher in that situation in much the same way. And we may disagree on this, but the Victor Point situation here and the Scotts Mills situation we just dealt with are two, in my mind, are two different things. The Scotts Mills situation isn't, hasn't been, hasn't been a result of larger class sizes, you know, of bubbles, of bubbles in a number of kids, like we've seen. It was, it went into the opening enrollment policy. There was, there was many things that were involved in that discussion. And this, with the Victor Point thing, it's kind of the same thing that happened at Central Ohio last year when we had a kindergarten class that had 33 kids. When we see bubbles like that, we don't want to have huge class sizes like that, and we, so we sometimes make, you know, take steps to alleviate that or to help in certain situations. And that's what the situation is at Victor Point. And if anybody else wants to chime in, that's fine, but that's kind of my, my take on it. It's a, it's a bit of a different situation.
It just, it doesn't appear to be fair to require a vote on spending $40,000 at one school, but to not require a vote on the other school. I'm just curious why a vote wasn't called for.
I think the situation is, we will be voting on it when we, when they bring somebody to the board to hire. We haven't taken formal, we haven't taken any formal action at this point, but we expect to be, based on the enrollment.
The approval would come, like Wally said, when we hire someone, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Would anyone else like to address the board tonight? Okay, seen none. We have one action item, the approval of the 2013-2014 employment contract for Superintendent Andy Belando. I had one question on this, one thing that popped my mind, and it's a pretty minor thing, but under the performance evaluation, it says the board should and executive session evaluate and assess, you know, right in the performance of the superintendent at least one time per year, and in any event, no later than June 1st annually during the term of this contract. Don't we normally do the evaluation in June? So I was wondering if that should read July 1st.
It's a good point.
Because it seems like it'd be, I mean, we're still pretty busy in May, it seems like the evaluation would be a little tough to, and that's probably, has that been in there for years and years?
Yeah. Probably should have amended that.
So I would probably, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I'd probably amend that to July 1st, and then we'd do the evaluation in June. I don't know why that caught my eye, maybe because the evaluation's been on my mind the last couple of weeks.
So I'll move for approval with that amendment to change the evaluation timeframe from June 1st to July 1st.
It's been moved and, moved for approval of the, Denise, did you have a question?
I was just going to say, who's the second?
Oh, we haven't got a second. Oh, all in second? Okay. Moved in second and to approve the contract of employment for Superintendent Belando with the amendment of the evaluation being done by July 1st. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. That's all we have tonight, so we're adjourned. Thank you for coming, everyone.